All right, let's call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll call Mr. Brandi.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda?
Make motion to approve this morning's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Communications Jake, anything?
Nothing out of my office.
Board?
No.
All right, none for me either, all right. Public comments is the portion of the agenda, the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. Board can't act on those items, but they could be topics for future meetings. We have a hand in the back. Mr. Nestery.
Yes, just a reminder to the public, uh, starting tomorrow, August fourteenth until business, start of business day, August nineteenth, the courthouse will be closed for our power upgrade. So we will, we intend, we intend to open at eight AM Monday morning, the nineteenth, but we are closing tomorrow first thing.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any other public comments, items not listed on the agenda this morning? Anything online, Lisa? Okay, very good, we'll move on. Is there a motion on the consent agenda this morning?
Yeah, make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
All right, very good, on to business. We have a special class C retail with outdoor service alcohol permit. Application.
I, I can take this one, um, I don't know if anybody's online for this, they've been, um, so this is a new owner to operate Wackos. Uh, existing, existing business, um, sent out the information before, right at the, a couple of weeks ago. So as far as I know, from the standpoint of going through alcoholic beverages, they're anxiously waiting for your meeting today.
Very good, uh, is Sheriff online?
I hadn't heard anything.
Yeah, Jason, okay, all right, Board, any questions, comments?
Environmental health is okay with everything, it's, uh, yeah, okay, all right. I have no further questions.
Sounds like no questions, is there a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve the special class C retail, um, alcohol, um, service permit for Wackos.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good, thank you, we have a special event permit, courthouse grounds, uh, Knoxville Hospital and Clinics. Jake, anybody here for that?
I don't know if anybody's online or not, this is the standard, um, they've done it for many years through the Knoxville, um, hospital, I believe that this is called the Girls Night Out.
Night Out, oh yeah.
And, uh, I think it's a pretty well attended event and unless Chris has any issues on.
Chris, no issues with my.
We need to make sure, we're trying to do a better job of alerting, um, people if that street gets closed earlier in the day, just to try and alleviate leaving the parking lot and stuff, but.
All right, very good.
Otherwise, nobody issued any concern.
Board, any questions?
No, I have none, we've done this before.
Yep.
Yeah, and just, and you're right Jake, on the regarding this, one PM to, says the vendors will start setting up at one PM, it does look like in here that they're going to leave an opening. Yeah. To go through the alleyway, but just probably need to.
We're just trying, we're just trying to communicate within the building better that day.
Yeah.
All right, very good, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve the special event application.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
All right, very good. We have a city appella appointment, Community Development Committee, uh, Chris, Christie Vanderwart. Term ending eight, one, twenty twenty seven. Yeah.
I can, I can take this.
Keisha's there, are you?
So Cynthia, um, had reached out to me with the city appella and, uh, she had stated that Christie is, um, willing to serve again. Um, she has, uh, attended twenty of the twenty-four meetings, uh, and I believe that's a three-year process, um, so, yeah. And just wanted to know if the board was willing to reappoint.
Okay, very good, Steve?
Nope, I have no questions.
All right, none for me either, is there a motion to approve the appointment?
I make motion to approve, um, the appointment of Christie Vanderwart.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
All right, Marion County ADA com- uh, coordinator. That was, Mr. Steve Edwards. Since retired, that what, what do we, what do we say, uh?
Forty-four years.
What's that?
All right, sorry, go ahead.
Now, there's a term for it, uh, when you are, uh, like emeritus now, uh.
Oh.
Oh, well, I'll think of it later.
Experienced.
We need to appoint one. So is there?
Yeah, I, I had, um, brought this up, um, Jake and I had been speaking about it, um, would you have to have an ADA coordinator? I had spoke with Chris Nestery because Chris had stated the beginning, um, during budget sessions last year, that he was willing to do it, um, with not, with no extra compensation, so again, I reached out to him, I didn't know if Chris ended up talking to Steve because you were gonna follow up and see what you had to do, if there were certifications or anything.
Chris?
There are no certifications needed, but there is a binder that the new Steve, Mr. Kale Edwards, is ready and willing to hand to me.
All right.
Are you willing to do that, Chris?
Absolutely, all right.
We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
All right, well, it sounds like we have a consensus, is there a motion to, uh, appoint Chris Nestery as the Marion County ADA Coordinator?
So moved.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. So Kale, this wasn't something you wanted to just take on?
First, we're very eager.
Liar. All right, all right, let's tone it down, tone it down. Uh, VA Campus Laundry Building. Mr. ADA Coordinator.
Oh boy, wow, I'll get a shirt made.
That's two titles, I mean.
I know, it's amazing, isn't it?
My god.
I, I don't know if I can carry the weight that Steve carried for all his years, but I'll try. Um, so, in conclusion, obviously, the board, you, you guys approved and we've carried out the, the gutting of the laundry, the roof is about ninety-nine percent, I mean, there's just a few spots that our contractor has found again and has come back and he's readdressed. Um, the building is secure, it is now impossible to, well, I mean, anything can get into, but it is locked and we have a key to get into it now. Um, the next logical step that we discussed about earlier was to get it appraised before we went to market. So, uh, Rich DeHear with DeHear and Associates was kind enough to come over and take a look at the building and give us a proposal for it. Um, his proposal was simple, uh, there'd be a twenty-seven hundred dollar fee for the appraisal. Uh, that's not actually the hurdle, the hurdle is going to be getting things figured out so he can appraise it. And some of those things that he would need to have discussed and figured out is uh, land area that's going to go with it, if it's going to be sold as a commercial site, so how much ground is going with it, that's not going to necessarily impede with the, the rest of the project. Um, zoning, not only zoning for that specific place, but then the zoning that is going to be around that building, that all needs to be taken into consideration. Short-term and long-term access to the property has to be discussed and all that would have to be done prior to him even starting the appraisal. Uh, he thinks that's the best way and the fairest way to give an accurate appraisal of the property, which I, I think seems very reasonable. One of the things that he stipulated is he would like to sit down with an appointed, uh, representative of the Board of Supervisors to hash some of those things out. When all that stuff is satisfactory, um, he would then start it and he'd take about two weeks to complete that appraisal process.
Board, I, I would like to say, um, I did speak, uh, with the city of Knoxville a little bit about the ground and because Carlin also brought this up. What Glenn and I, um, had kind of spoke about was, and also I believe Rich DeHear of DeHear and Associates brought up that the size of building, he was gonna at least need five acres to be able to go with that building. So currently, that's kind of what's been projected, but of course, that's, we have to, you know, as a board, have to decide that. So, five acres is on that, and then also currently, the zoning remains, um, R-two. But he assumed all along that they would accept, um, C-two zoning or, um, M-one, which would be light industrial, so. And P, uh, PUD is an option if the combination of uses is, is, is there, so.
Well, it makes perfect sense, I think we need to really take that in consideration, how much ground around that, we would, depending on what who we get as a potential buyer. Whether it be some type of business, I don't, I spoke to Carlo about this too, and it makes perfect sense to me that we look at that. Then, you know, I don't, I don't know what acreage would be needed depending on what goes in there, right, but, but it, but it, it, it needs to be addressed, I agree.
So Glenn, do you have comment?
Yeah, that could.
It's all straight plays.
Yeah, temporary. You, you know, we recently approved that concept plan, which is a variation on the original one. Um, we had designated that commercial area at four acres, based on our conversation with the appraiser and a call from Keisha. We looked at reorganizing that to be a five-acre site. And we had to do it with that potential school site to the west still being ten, so we've lowered Constitution down a little bit to make that work. At first glance, C-two is the most logical zoning. We won't know what kind of use is there until it's sold, um, but C-two can accommodate everything but light manufacturing. And so, when I think, when, when the word light manufacturing comes up, medical instruments or things like that, um, a very, very light impact. Um, the concept plan has the major roads being Vets Boulevard, north-south and Constitution east-west. We can have a discussion about temporary access because you can still get in the back door, it's not a pretty route anymore, but it's, it's functional. And, uh, the concept plan suggests basically R-two zoning to the, to the south of it and some kind of a park facility and some unknown residential to the east of it. So, um, you know, it's, it's nearly, uh, up against, uh, Young's Park as it is, so all this we can put together for the appraiser and it's just a matter of, we don't even have to roll up our sleeves, it's that kind of conversation.
So Glenn, um, given those parameters, would there be a need to have, the way I think about this appraisal, because of the potential variability would be kind of a a one, two, three, it, it looks like a C-two, it looks like an R-two, whatever, those different, um, potential uh, uses could be. Do we want to do something like that, or do we want to just say, we're gonna go C-two, five acres? And that's what the appraisal will be?
Well, I think we can say that's the intent.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I was never an appraiser in Canada, but I did appraisals under, um, understudy, if you like, um, and, um, you, you can assume a land site area, but you have to have the dimensions, you can assume, um, highest and best use, you have to for the appraisal. You can, uh, assume a certain zoning and a certain land use around it, now, with the concept planned and a revised site area that we've just discussed, they have all the parameters they need, uh, um, do we need to subdivide the property now? You will to sub, to sell it, but do you need it right now? I don't know. You could move in that direction though, from, uh, to subdivision or rezoning, um, I don't think City Council would stiff you on that one.
But I, I, I just want to make sure, all, 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 all you really need from us is just say, we'll agree on the parameters.
Yes.
And we don't need to do any formal action transferring property or doing any of that yet until we get something.
No, and you'll also have, it's, it's hard when you're selling because there, there are things that have to get worked out within any project. But you'll have a window within which you've got to sort out, uh, the, you, you've got a plan for the utility connections. Uh, during that time, you can subdivide and rezone to whatever is appropriate. But between, uh, our council and supervisors and the Joint Development Committee and the concept plan, it's not too hard to work it out.
So if we're all in agreement on those parameters?
You know, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement on the parameter, a- as a board or at least, in, in my opinion, we have to be very cognizant of the, the return on the taxpayers' money that we, that they've placed, so if we can make this, this site that, that is taxable, you know, we, we really need to look at that real hard. And I, and I'm assuming if, if we don't get this, well, we call them the laundry building, if we don't get it sold for or a business of some type, we can relook at how we're gonna distribute that land again later.
That's why, if we don't, if we just say, we're okay with the parameters, we've got consensus on the board, we're not locked into anything that we said we want it to be this, this, this and this.
We just did the same with an appraiser on the ball field.
Yeah.
We said, this is the site, it has, we're just subdividing it now, we'll zone it C-two, there'll be a park to the west if we do this. Um, and we got a number.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do that. Maybe we just, you should just follow that, that outline.
But in terms of accommodating any potential future development of that site with the building in particular, but if they're replacing it with commercial, we're happy to push and pull the, the the parameters to make it fit, um, until we've made decisions that lock us in, of course.
Right, yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah, and I also think that the board needs to consider, once the appraisal is done, and then how we want to consider marketing.
Right.
So once we get that appraisal, we can be presented and then feel like.
So you may find when it comes time to offer it that your buyers will be looking for a subdivision line and a zoning, but you can cross that bridge later.
Right, so probably the only action we need Jake is to authorize a, uh, to proceed with the appraisal process.
Whatever, no worries, fine.
So, is there, is there a motion to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I make a motion to, um, for, we hire, um, DeHear and Associates for an appraisal on the laundry building.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very, very good, thank you.
Mark, may I make just make one quick comment on the building, um, I had been asked about, um, insuring the building now that we put, um, the new roof on and stuff, so I did reach out, um, and the, the building is, from what I understand, at this point, we have liability still on that land, just like we always did, including that building, from a liability standpoint. The building is vacant and has been vacant for an extended period of time, so we can't schedule it at this point due to the vacancy.
Right.
So it's gonna remain liability only until something changes.
Something changes, yeah, I appreciate you checking on that, Jake, thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five, which is the Emergency Medical Services, uh, Central Services First Reading, this is a first reading. Uh, if we follow our process, or the process on this, Jared, maybe just a quick outline, this is the first reading, there'll be a second and then
uh, reading as well, and then, uh, if passed, there'll be a committee formed and another meeting after this.
Okay, so, uh, you can see the resolution on the screen, not gonna read through this at all, but what we essentially need is a vote on the resolution for the first reading. Board, do you have any discussion prior to that?
No.
No, I think we've hashed her out.
But he kind of has their positions articulated, so is there a motion on the resolution?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five.
I'll second.
Ramey.
No.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four, which is a federal aid funding agreement, Tyler.
So this project was added into our five-year program earlier this year for, uh, federal aid resurfacing of S forty-five from Highway G seventy-six to the Lucas County Line. Uh, standard STBG funding is being utilized, uh, not, no grants, so this is allocated federal road funding, uh, eighty percent federal and twenty percent match with our, from our form-to-market fund, so, uh, this is the standard federal aid agreement for, uh, federal road and bridge funding, so.
Okay, Board, any questions?
I don't have any.
Nope, I have none.
Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-four.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good, thanks, Tyler. Oh, Tyler.
Better up again.
Road Department update.
Yeah, so the last update I gave was back in, in May, uh, not a lot of positive to report at that time, I don't think. Uh, but since then, we have completed a number of projects, uh, the G seventy-six T-SIP project, so this was a safety grant to widen and pave shoulders, um, in the Gospport area along, uh, near English Creek. So that project has been completed, is a really nice addition to that series of horizontal curves. Uh, similarly, we had a T-SIP project on Highway T fifteen at Metcalf Cor- or excuse me, Crispin Corner, uh, or the intersection of S seventy-one and T fifteen, that project has been completed. Uh, G twenty-eight, the major project, you know, approximately four million dollars in asphalt work out there and, and guardrail work. That has also been completed here in the last few months. And then the T fifteen Flagler Bridge, we do have a contract, the earthwork contractor moved in yesterday. After about a two-week delay because of the rains a couple of weeks ago, he was delayed where he was and then, uh, you know, subsequently had to catch up there to get started, so, um, actually had a really good day yesterday, so things are progressing nicely now that the earthwork contractor is on site. There are four or five other subcontractors that have to fall into place to complete that bridge project. We've been getting a lot of question about what the earthwork entails, um, so because we went to a two-span bridge to get all of this the substructure of the bridge foundation out of the railroad right-of-way, we went to a two-span which required larger beams for clearance over the railroad, so the road raise is approximately three to four feet, depending on which side of the bridge you're on, so. So that's what the earthwork entails, is actually raising the road bed and reprofiling the, the, the curve, vertical curve, um, for the approaches on each side of the bridge, so. That's what is, that's what's underway now, once earthwork is complete, they will proceed to bridge approach paving and, uh, then the bridge rail, so the actual railings on the bridge is concrete and has to be poured, but they can't do that until the approach work is completed, so, uh, then there'll be just some minor work, uh, wrapping up shoulders and guardrail and things like that.
So what's the projected completion date?
I would say end of September.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we're, we're probably over two months behind schedule now, um, no fault of the bridge contractor, they've been fantastic to work with, you know, their their efforts and I, work items have been very timely, they've worked efficiently. Uh, the bridge deck pour went fantastic, you know, beam setting was done way ahead of schedule. You know, once they were able to set the beams and get railroad approval, so, you know, weather and the railroad have been our, our delays that have caused us to be behind schedule. Uh, so a few other updates, Junction ninety-two, uh, is progressing, I think when we last met in May, they were just getting final approvals to commence work. Uh, they did start in June, unfortunately, we had some wet weather, uh, between now and then and, and some delays, but they have, uh, the majority of the footings poured, concrete poured and are, and are now starting on the interior electric and plumbing work. And they'll progress with all trades from west to east, um, fairly quickly here, it sounds like, getting plumbing and the, and then concrete work and then start erecting steel right behind them, as the, as the trades move from west to east, the next trade will come in and start right behind them.
Do you have any idea when that section will be done, Tyler, do they have a giving?
That, that section, what do you?
Meaning like, when you're talking about, just the, it's the building that you're, you're constructing now, right?
Yeah, the main shop building is what I'm referring to, yep. If they were just to move the construction schedule they proposed originally, we're looking at like May of next year. However, we've asked them to, i- i- and they've, they haven't provided an updated schedule with because it really just got going within the last couple of weeks. We've asked them to provide a condensed schedule with the, the plan now to kind of condense all the trades and have them working simultaneously, so we haven't seen that yet. Uh, but, you know, every time we talk to the general contractor, they're you know, that is their plan, is to condense everything and, and go about the project a little bit differently, so hopefully we can get an updated schedule. It won't be any sooner than Ma- March, excuse me. When the project was bid, they immediately told us that electrical equipment was gonna, going to be probably fifteen, sixteen months. So, right now, they're anticipating, we won't even receive that equipment until March of twenty twenty-five. So hopefully, everything else is complete by that point. There are a couple of other things in the works that'll be coming before you shortly out there for the full site development, so that kind of the next phases of that will be beginning here shortly, and you'll see those on future agendas. Update on the Hammond Covered Bridge, so this is the covered bridge, I gave you an update about south of Attica. Um, we have since removed the, uh, damaged north spans and that center pier. And have provided the protections of the abutment that we're saving and the, the piles that support the the covered portion of the bridge, so those protections are in place to prevent scour and undermining or damage from future flood events. And, so what's remaining on our end would be to to make this segment pedestrian-friendly again, so there's some bridge planks that need to be replaced, we have to do some additional fencing now that the north spans are gone. Uh, because it's just open-ended at this point, so we have temporary fencing, closing the whole bridge at this time, but we'll make it pedestrian-friendly uh, for minimal cost at this time, and then, you know, maybe there's future considerations using alternative funding in the future for this bridge, whether that be relocation or, uh, clear span for the nor- or, or north span replacement or something to that effect.
Hey, Tyler, does that include that, we talked about a parking area down on that?
Yeah, we have not done that.
Okay.
But in an effort, currently, there's a driveway to a private residence that's also the access from the south, so in an effort to not have parking blocking the driveway for viewership of the bridge, we would provide a couple of parking stalls, we would rock an area there. And that has not been completed yet, I hear. Um, so, we have taken delivery of, uh, new motor grader, we received funding, or we received pricing that was equivalent to last year, so twenty twenty-three pricing. We took delivery of a twenty twenty-four machine, uh, we worked with CAT on that because they had an opening in their build slots, and so that worked out in our favor, we didn't have to pay for inflation, uh, because they had an open build slot and we used our previous contract amount. So that was to our advantage, um, new dump truck will be here this fall. Uh, future budgets are very much in question, uh, just due to, you know, funding not revenue, not keeping up with inflation on things like equipment and construction. So similar to construction and equipment in the past, in this current budget or past budget cycle, we'll be evaluating our equipment replacement needs and, and really prioritizing those moving forward in future budgets. Uh, the good thing is, we're in pretty good shape on dump trucks, uh, motor graders, though, definitely something we want to continue to stay on top of. I'll have two retirements, uh, between now and the end of the calendar year and another three to four in the next calendar year, so we are very much in a transition period right now within our department for a number of reasons, uh, because of the changes we know that are coming and the, the loss of a lot of knowledge and experience, just you know, an unquantifiable amount of knowledge and experience is gonna go out the door here in the next, uh, twelve to eighteen months, so trying to get the right folks in the right positions to, to be able to be trained by those folks and to try to get as much of that knowledge passed on as they can. It's one thing to be able to run equipment, but to have the knowledge that, that those guys have, you know, from working in the county for twenty-five to thirty-five years, that's really what we're trying to get is much, much of, uh, passed on. Um, and then to do, you know, we're also kind of in a holding pattern due to budget and personnel changes that we, we foresee. Um, nothing has been formalized there, some of that also hinges on our move to Junction and having, you know, versus five guys here, four there, six or eight in another place, we'll have twenty-one crew under one roof. Um, how we supervise and administer work may change. No formalized plans there yet, but we are keeping our options open as we move forward through these retirements. Operationally, we'll be looking at a budget amendment due to the delay in the start of the Junction ninety two pro- project, we were unable to, well, we weren't, we didn't expend the funds that we had planned in the prior fiscal year. So what we need to do in a budget amendment to expend those funds in FY twenty five. There may be subsequent budget amendments for either secondary road fund or the general fund or funds that were also planned, but maybe not budgeted in the correct fiscal year because of that reason is also. But for now, you know, Jake and I discussed, it may be best because we're now expending those here in July and August to go ahead and do a budget amendment because, you know, we're talking six, seven figure changes right now with more six or seven figure changes toward the end of this FY twenty five fiscal year. So. So that may be coming your way, I think Jake sent me the documents I, for the budget amendment, I haven't taken a look at those just yet. So operationally, we are really in playing catch up right now, the weather has been hindering a lot of the, the work and sustainable improvements that we wanted to accomplish this construction season of this summer. So our crews are really trying to play catch up and we have a lot of blading to do yet from the, two or three weeks ago, we received, you know, eight to ten inches of rain and it came in a hurry, a lot of it. So our roads really took a hit and we're still out there bleeding. And honestly, some of our blade guys that have been here four or five years have never experienced something like this because it's been so dry for the past few years that they've never, their roads have never been in this condition, so we're, we're out there training, we're trying to get new people to understand how that you have this giant rut, you don't take all the rock that you have on the road and fill that rut, there's other ways to do that. So it's a learning process, it's slower than normal. So we're, we're working through that and it, it takes time. However, we are progressing on some of our gravel road stabilizations, two hundred and sixteenth or the Howe Bottom Road between hundred ninety eighth and T seventeen, if you haven't had a chance to drive that, I would really recommend you see what, that is a really good example of what gravel, gravel stabilization is all about. That road turned out fantastic, we completed it about the end of June, so it's been in about a month. And similarly, you can drive the roads that we did last May and June and they're in a very similar condition. We are finishing up hundred and fifty a stabilization. We started it yesterday, I don't know that we'll get done with the rain and forecast for tomorrow. But that'll be a huge improvement, that's on our third highest volume gravel road. It'll improve safety, ride quality, reduce dust and provide, you know, hopefully some very long term sustainability on that road.
Yeah, I drove that the other day, Tyler, it is, it is pretty nice.
We have the two hundred sixteenth. The one complaint we do get is people like to drive, think they can drive faster. Yes and no, a lot of these roads that we're doing this on, we're taking them from thirty to thirty five feet, making them what we call a normal width of twenty to twenty six foot width. So narrowing the road may slow the traffic down as well. Some people just don't like that, but that, that's a maintainable width for us also and, and a standard width. Couple, last couple of things, we are already looking ahead for budgets. For the next year, we have, not only are we possibly looking at a budget amendment for Junction, but you know, it's, it's only the first or one month into the fiscal year and I've basically expended every dollar I have in construction. When you have three dry years followed by some pretty large rain events, things expose themselves and we're, we're not, that's not uncommon, it's just we haven't experienced that for a while, so we have so many projects we're going to have to do this summer, fall that we weren't expecting. So our construction budget, which is reduced from last year, is already gone. So if we can, and we were not declared in any disasters here in Marion County. You know, we didn't have any bridge damage other than the covered bridge, which isn't eligible anyway for any federal or emergency relief funding. So, so those will just be coming out of our local, uh, local budget to do those repairs or replacement projects. And those are going to be time consuming, so some of those large culverts will be looking at other contractors to do or will be time consuming for our, for our own crews, so. Other than that, we did receive verification on our Facebook page, so we use it a lot to keep people up to date on construction progress, road closures, it's been very useful the last few weeks during flooding closures, both lake level and flash flood enclosures. So there were some issues that we worked through, Emily helped and the treasurer's office helped me get it, our page back up and running as we were offline for a while. And then we got that verification badge, which shouldn't happen again, now that's happened twice that we've been deleted. So we'll, we'll continue to utilize that and provide updates. One other note, our road closures at the county level, we had a county five one one page. We are now active on the state's or the Iowa five one one page. The County Engineers Association has been working on that for, oh man, six, seven years trying to get that link. And so our road closures show up on the Iowa five one one. So only closures show up right now, so if we have flooding or road construction that closes the road, it will show up on Iowa five on one, Waze and Google Maps. Any road construction, let's say a one lane or shoulder closure, those are not currently showing up yet, but they're still trying to work through that, so that is an advantage for us. It's going to be even more advantageous in the coming years because the Iowa DOT has a ton of work planned in Marion County over the next three to four years. That will greatly impact the traveling public, so we want our, those motorists to know what we have going on as well as they try to find their way through Marion County, so. I appreciate the Service Bureau's efforts in getting that done. They kind of did an emergency version of that because of all the flooding up in northwest Iowa, which they, I think the DOT realized, well, that wasn't so bad and so they got, they got us on there full time now, so. Any questions?
Board?
Tyler, about your budget in the future, I'll, I'll contact you because I'd like to sit down and talk a little bit more about that. I think it's important that we
Yeah.
stand on top of it, so.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Nope, thank you, Tyler.
All right, is there a motion to close discussion?
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Updates, Steve?
I have none.
Keisha?
Just reminding the board, I have the library meeting this afternoon at four P M. So I'll be going to the Pella, City of Pella's library. And then also on Friday, we have Central Iowa workforce.
Very good, thank you, none for me, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.